Work session order. Clerk, please call her on.
Councilperson Ike Langley?
Here.
Filing?
Here.
Chair Maye?
Here.
One more?
Excused.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
So we have a few items, and I know that Mr. Pastu may have some additional as we move along in our work session. So Vince, I think I'll just turn it right over to you, and we'll get started.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. First item is just a quick review with the City Council based on our goal-setting session this past January 12th. I've added a few items that we talked about at that point in time. Let's go real quick. Goal B, which is invest in recreational, cultural, and historical assets. We would be adding six items, which is develop a recreation and arts commission, which was part of what was discussed there on the 12th. Goal D was continue to support revitalization downtown. There are two items. One is, actually, the first one would be an addition, evaluate cost incentive programs that would degrade the cost of fire suppression systems in older downtown buildings to encourage additional residential apartments above the first floor. And then the other one is to expand upon aggressive maintenance programs to expand to address trash destruction in downtown. Goal E, which is promote community engagement, adding item four, which is explore feasibility of preparing a newsletter to be mailed to city residents and businesses. And then number five, establish library advisory boards. Goal F would be adding, or actually, expanding upon an existing objective that deals with, Goal F, provide fiscal responsibility while maintaining quality life. Continue phased implementation of brand rollout, in this case, expanded with parks. Then the other items I put in there for consideration is still noting that we've got to provide the council an activity report regarding Mike Monroe on the go. Some additional follow-ups with national resources, where they mostly are streets, parks, and then... One of the things that our communications director, Jody Egan, and I were talking about, as we developed this, we will look at updating the presentation related to 2018-19, goals and objectives, highlighting what has been accomplished and what is still in process, and certainly the additions that were discussed at the January 12th meeting. So I put those out there, make sure if you're okay with it, I'll put it on for formal approval as an expedited, unless there are any other changes.
Seeing the council, Andrew?
I don't know the exact item in front of me, but we had talked about, I think, one of the goals and objectives, developing natural assets or taking care of natural assets. We had talked in the past about doing something with waterways or doing something with boat access. We discussed a possible grant with Mill Race Park in the past. I was wondering if we were continuing to pursue that in the future?
I think that was part of our original 2018-19, and so we left those on there to continue that pursuit. This would be, these would be the additions or expansion of existing ones that we have here.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from council? I don't see any. I think we're good there, but thank you, Vince. Look forward to that report as we get the updates, see where we are, and as we prioritize the rest of the year. Thank you.
The next item we have is discussion regarding downtown redevelopment sites. Passing a handout to Downtown Development Coordinator, Annette Nola, and I have been talking a little bit about this over the last couple of weeks. Certainly, this is a follow-up with our agreement with the Spire Development, in which, you know, the suggestion is, well, why don't we look at all of the identified in the downtown master plan, including the redevelopment of the fire station site? Didn't you have a copy there?
No, I think we're one or two down, but...
With that, we kind of wanted to go through this with you, Annette. If you want to come up to the podium, and we'll go through and answer any questions that you might have. But what we're looking at doing is initiating essentially a letter of interest with developers to let them know that there are four city-owned properties in the downtown, that being the existing fire station plus the adjacent parcel with the county parking lot that we've talked about. The parking lot on the northeast corner of McComan East Front Street, which is parking lot at this point, obviously. We're looking at the one at the southwest corner of Monroe and First Street, and then the other is the much larger riverfront parking lot that encompasses a number of parcels along there. As identified in this, certainly, the objective is to redevelop these sites with market potential outlined in our recent residential and target market analysis and describe, it's referenced in our downtown master plan, and certainly identifying something with the context and character of residential development focused on the missing middle type of housings that are in demand but underrepresented in our community housing inventory. The commercial redevelopment shall be mixed use, looking for first-floor retail, restaurant, service-related type of use, again, consistent with the master plan. Where we start going into this is looking at a two-phased process. One, initially, again, doing the, you know, the soliciting letters of interest, and then if we have interest from more than one or two developers for each of the sites, try and narrow it down to two or three. You know, each developer does not have to express interest on all four sites. There may be some that may be more appropriate, more interested in some of the smaller sites, certainly the larger one, potentially along the riverfront, maybe somebody with a little more experience with projects of that nature. And then the second phase would be, once that's narrowed down, would ask them to put together some proposals, and I'm going to talk a little bit about it once we get through this first. But a lot of communities, actually, when they go through this type of competition, if you will, will actually provide the developer with some funding to help with putting together a, defray some of their costs. They're still going to have some skin in the game related to their site plan and elevations that would go with that specific site development. And then the item on the following page discusses the submittals, again, very basic conflict of interest policy that we have in there, and then certainly a timeline to go with it. The first paragraph in the timeline seems important. We would look at something in March to do an outreach with the developer, with the development community, to provide them some information about the sites. Also, we're selling the city of Monroe. What have we done successfully? There's a number of great projects that have taken place in this community over the last couple decades, and so convince them that we have the wherewithal to deliver on a project on the scale that they would be looking at. And so as you go through that, it gives you a little sense of it. We wanted to keep it as simple as possible. Annette and Ms. Egan have had some discussions about how to pretty this thing up, so we put a little, you know, something to catch people's attention, but keep it as simple as possible to initiate and see what we come up with, and I think we had a deadline of April 15th?
April 15th.
April 15th to get that out there, so... Annette, you want to expand upon?
Covered it quite well.
And you did all the work.
I'll see if there's, is there further comments or thoughts? I mean, the information is helpful because it does write some background, but also the timelines. There were four sites, I'll just start, there's four sites. Now, the plan has additional sites, but we're not focusing on those as well.
There were six redevelopment sites in the downtown master plan. One of them, it currently is privately owned, so as demand creates a market, you know, that property owner may or may not choose to develop in accordance with the plan.
Okay.
The other redevelopment area is centered on the farmer's market, so we're trying to bridge with the market management, again, another privately owned site. So these, the four in reference here are under municipal control.
Wonderful, because I thought, well, the other two might as well, we should talk about them, because if you may recall, there were six in the plan, and why that, you gave good answers there. I'll just see if there's questions from the council. Andrew?
Thank you, Your Honor. Each of these sites either is or includes a parking lot, and as, as I mentioned in my comments in our previous meeting, to become a marginal development project that we engage in, that is going to limit parking such that we are unable to expand further without having a parking structure, without going to a vertical solution, as we eliminate parking in the city that has already been identified as an issue. Now, I understand that some of these, just an elimination of some of these parking spaces may be absorbed by the remaining ones in the city, but to a certain extent, we have to plan for the events that we hold as a city, not the regular Tuesday afternoon traffic. If we plan on being an event center for the county, and we are the county seat, and we have been an event center in the past, and I think that's a critical part of development as well, I hope we do that stuff in the future, we need to accommodate parking for those sorts of events. In looking at a parking structure, is one of these sites potentially eligible for that project? And do we think that we could have a private developer work on that project, partner with us on that project for us? Or do we think that this is something that we're going to have to put up the money for ourselves?
So in the master plan, and keep in mind, a plan is, a master plan is a guide. It's what could be, not necessarily what will be, but there was a location identified for a centralized parking deck that is on the east side of Monroe Street, which may or may not be serviceable to those on the west side of Monroe Street, depending upon what happens with development and the context of what Monroe Street looks like. So there is a wide variety of opportunities to pursue financing of such a deck that would likely correspond to municipal, public-private partnership. So there's a number of mechanisms that you are able to use to accomplish that, recognizing that, you know, if a DDA is the partner, their resources are going to be limited to what appreciation or new value projects bring into the downtown. If it's privately, a private contribution, that's typical, because there's a new user who creates a lot of demand, and there's a payment that's applied to the deck, and there's also user fees to use the deck. So without knowing what the deck might look like, how many spaces it would entail, how much property acquisition would be involved, it's difficult to pinpoint exactly what that financing package would look like, other than to know. Part of, that would be part of the due diligence in putting a pro forma for the deck together, is where would this be? How many spaces? Let's run some numbers, and then figure out what makes sense to pursue as far as the financing is concerned.
Okay, does the city currently own the site that you're referencing?
Partially.
Okay. Other comments or questions for Vince or Annette? John?
How were you planning on marketing this proposal? What sources are you going to send it to?
Right, so that is, of course, a challenge, reaching out to the development community. I think one of the largest opportunities that we have is through our membership with the Urban Land Institute. They will disseminate any RFPs, RFQs, requests for letters of interest to the, to the membership, and we're also going to start maintaining a list of developers, and, you know, to be honest, we'll probably have to cold-call quite a few. ULI is really centered on metro Detroit area, so there may be some opportunity to capture some of the developer market in Toledo in northern Ohio, but we're, we're not connected, at least, you know, through my memberships, we're not connected with the Toledo area yet. So definitely outreach is going to be necessary to create enough interest that we think we would have a suitable number of letters and put us in the, in the driver's seat as far as making a selection.
Yeah. I know that we're, we're trying to push the, you're looking at a March informational meeting primarily because of the Spire Development over on the fire station site. However, I guess I'm making the suggestion, a lot of developers don't know Monroe. There's a lot of regional builders that don't even know Monroe. Monroe does not sell itself outside of the urban area. My suggestion is, working with Jody, since we're one of the few communities our size that has a Director of Communications and Social Media, is that we prepare a short video that introduces the city to the developers, showing them what our assets are, even before we start asking them to come into town and look for development sites, because if they don't know Monroe, they're not going to invest in Monroe. And I think we just need to take it a little bit slower. We need to introduce the development community who we are and put our best foot forward, rather than just send out a packet saying we're looking for developers, because a lot of communities are doing that. In regards to some of the questions relative to parking, we're never going to have a downtown parking structure that's going to be dependent upon having a private investor, because they cannot generate the rents in their buildings to pay for a private parking, to even contribute to a private parking structure. It's going to have to be, if we do a parking structure, it's going to have to be municipally financed, either by the city or the combination of the city and the county. The other part of it is, is that as long as the city allows people in the downtown area to have private parking lots, we're not going to squeeze the bands sufficiently for people to use a parking structure. So one of the policies the city needs to do is to prohibit private parking lots in the downtown in order to require people to park in public parking lots where they can pay a fee. Otherwise, we're just defeating it. I mean, we're going to build a parking structure, and people are going to build their private parking lots, and we're not going to have any tenants. So I think the whole idea of parking in downtown parking lot has to be something that's strategically advanced by, by the city and by the county. I know that the managers memo, the city and county have a parking committee. We have a ton of asphalt parking in this town, which, I have to tell the council, parking lots do not generate any taxable value. Parking lots do not generate any jobs. So for every parking space that we have, we've lost tax revenue, and we've lost jobs. Okay? We need more building space. I agree with Councilman Felder, is that we're constrained, so we have to build. We have to build vertically. We have the opportunities, in some cases, to build horizontally based on the amount. I would estimate, looking at an aerial, forty percent of our downtown is of asphalt parking lots. So, I mean, we have room to build, but I think we need to introduce the development community to who we are. We really do. And I'll take it one step further. In other communities, there's a housing shortage. Builders are not building housing because they're not getting money from the financial institutions, because they were still burned back in 2006, 2007. People are looking for housing in other communities. The housing prices are going up significantly, even above asking prices, except in Monroe. Again, we're kind of located in the middle of Ann Arbor, Detroit, and Toledo, and we're not selling ourself outside of the city to the greater region. If people in the region knew the type of housing stock that we had and the affordability of our housing stock, our housing prices would be going up, and that would then attract more development interest. So I think this is kind of a broader approach that we need to take in terms of introductions, marketing ourself, and then going after the developers. I mean, I applaud the fact that we're moving so fast on this, but the one thing that we don't want to do is go out so fast to the development community and get no responses, because then people are going to say, see, I told you so. Monroe doesn't have a market. No one is interested in town, and we can't use that, we can't fall back on that excuse when people don't know who we are. So when you have the next conversation, I would ask the city manager, when you guys have a conversation with Jody, think about the idea of marketing ourselves regionally. I'm even in favor of putting money in the budget in order to selectively put newspaper or TV ads in the Toledo and in the Detroit markets, or Ann Arbor market, showing people the quality of our community and our housing stock, especially with the number of people now that telecommute. So those are some of my thoughts when I read through this really fast. I, you, we don't want to go out to the development community so fast that we're not going to get any really viable responses, and then people are going to fall back saying, see, I told you so. Monroe's just wasting its time. We can't let that happen. That's my comment, Your Honor.
Other comments from council? Other thoughts? Well, I think there's a couple items here. I think that one is, as John said, with marketing, I think there's examples where, in the city, we've actually had on our website and others about video and making information, the branding is example of that. Maybe something we could look at, look at Vince down there, is an idea how to put, push out some additional information about Monroe. Try to figure out, maybe there's a manner to find out, just through some context, whether they do or don't know information about Monroe. But I think we have some steps to take to get there.
I mean, Jody has done some awesome videos, and we should do one that's more, I mean, she can do one, I'm sure, that's focused on kind of like the, the community assets and the development potential here, the real estate potential here, in terms of our downtown buildings and our housing stock, seeing the quality of the stuff that she's produced out of her office.
You know what, if I may, I'm just, I'm hearing we got to do a little, have a stronger outreach program, but I'm going to, you know, thank Annette for putting this together very quickly from our meeting less than two weeks ago, among the other things that she was working on. So I think there's a lot of good framework in here, I think, but certainly we'll, we'll take a look at how we can work on the, the marketing and outreach aspect of it with some more specific details.
One last comment, Your Honor?
Sure.
On the bottom of page one, where it says the city of Monroe is prepared to offer financial incentives of five to 10, I would submit that that's really something the downtown development authority should budget for, not the city. Especially if the sites are in the downtown, consistent with the downtown master plan, the DDA should be financing these financial incentives, not the, not the city of Monroe. That's my thought. And I know that they're sitting on some funds, and I'm always told that those funds are already committed to a lot of other projects, but I really think that when we're talking about redevelopment, it's going to be very beneficial to the DDA. They should toss some money into the, into this mix.
And part of the reason, I think, also for putting that in there, I'm not sure if we've done that historically, and I'm sure in your professional background, you see it where communities actually, in order to let the development community know that they're serious, because they do put a substantial amount of time and effort into these, you know, site plans and elevation drawings for these type of projects and the competition, that it lets the development community know that, look, this, this community's serious about it. And so I, part of the reason I wanted to have that on there is this, this is what a lot of communities have done to try and inspire development, is, you know, assist in getting a really good proposal from a prospective developer.
I guess I have two follow-ups regarding the DDA there. There is, you know, we know what the revenues are that they have, and I know that tomorrow's the meeting and discussion about some of the development things that they have in mind, is of city, I think, that saw the, some of the proposed budget items, but the, you know, some of the existing buildings and redeveloping those, when those that, trying to get architectural plans and trying to help in that fashion, because you're talking about old buildings that don't have fire suppression or don't have certain things. So that, I know that's one of the items. There's a, there's a couple others that they're talking about tomorrow as well. Second thing is, because we hear, you know, pure lack of parking, and to me, it's, it's, when I look at it, I, there's no question, I can see there's a lot of parking and asphalt space, and as development comes, they still have to find a place for the space. But I'd be curious, maybe when it comes back, and just probably could just hypothetically, what the amount would be of some, some, I would say, small, medium, whatever size structure would be. I know we've thrown some numbers out in the past, but if we're going to be thinking about that, we should know now what it was going to be, whether it's even feasible, so...
I'm always somewhat hesitant with parking structures until you get the density for it, but you're talking, I mean, the rule of thumb was $20,000 a space.
A space, yeah.
Higher now, yeah.
Yeah, and I bring it up because I think it's important, since we're having the discussion, to understand this is a significant number to get at.
Yeah, the other, the other part with parking structures is that the newest ones that are being built are not built kind of like the old helix, where they were always on an angle. They're built primarily just like a two or three-story building, because the idea is, again, ten, fifteen years from now, with autonomous vehicles, there's no longer going to be a need for parking structures, but the structure needs to be there in order to convert it into things like mixed-use or apartments. So they're developing them even differently today than they did 10 years ago, so...
There's so much that's changed rapidly, and there's many autonomous vehicles already that are, you know, being tested, and, and of course, they have to go somewhere when they're waiting to be called for a ride, and they're talking about station lots and different things where they're going to be collecting, they'll have to go somewhere as well, as opposed to just sitting on the street waiting. It's not going to be right at the door necessarily. There's, just with the automation and change, it's, you know, it's not about parking everybody's car, it's about how do you get the public to where the activities or the events are as well, so... There's, there's a lot of conversation on this. Other comments?
Thanks, Annette.
All right, thank you, Annette.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Vince.
Done with me here.
We'll keep moving forward. Next item.
The next item is just a discussion, or I should say discussion, but an introduction regarding principal shopping district. This is an item that's on the city council's goals and objectives, and tonight is just, Annette's going to provide just an introduction to that and, you know, what that entails. And again, part of it is, is some of the challenge that we have with our tax increment capture with the DDA is really not as significant as you would like for the, for the needs there, and so this is one means of supplementing it. So I'll let Annette go into discussing what the principal shopping districts are and what they can do.
So again, we're here just to introduce the topic and to highlight some of the questions that may arise as you are considering whether or not this is the right action to take for, for the city of Monroe. So as with anything, there has to be a legal justification to create an organization or a board like a principal shopping district. Similarly to the creation of a DDA, there's enabling legislation. In this case, the enabling legislation is Act 120 of 1961. I want to call attention to that date for a later con- I want to call attention to that date for a later comment, but just keep in mind that we're talking, this law is one of the older revitalization ordinances or laws on the state of Michigan has provided to communities. Largely, there's a lot more detail. Vince has copies of the, did you already?
I haven't handed them out.
Oh, okay. I made a copy of the Principal Shopping District and Business Improvement District Act for everyone to read when they're bored and want something interesting to read. But I'm just going to highlight a few of the key points in this piece of legislation. So Act 120 authorizes the creation of principal shopping districts and business improvement districts. I want to distinguish between the two because the Business Improvement District is initiated by a petition of the property owners in the downtown. This is not what we're looking at, so I'm not going to discuss that part of the ordinance, of the state enabling legislation. So in broad sense, the act exists to establish the district, to authorize development, to provide for operation of the district, and to authorize collection of revenue and bonding if necessary for projects. So if that sounds a little bit familiar, like maybe that's what the DDA does, the DDA enabling legislation wasn't created until 1975, so this act pre-existed DDAs. The powers, I want to start this by saying they are more broad than practical use. And a lot of that revolves and rotates back to the fact that DDAs have now kind of supplanted some of the activities of the principal shopping districts. So in the enabling legislation, what you are allowed to do is improve roads and pedestrian walkways, construct and operate off-street parking lots or structures, contract for maintenance, acquire property to achieve the implementation of those activities, and then also to engage in market research, marketing campaigns and promotions, and special events. I did a quick survey of some of the other principal shopping districts that have activities in the state of Michigan. There aren't a lot of them. I want to say there's probably eight or ten that I'm familiar with statewide. But if they do exist, most dedicate the resources that are generated for maintenance and marketing of the districts that they represent. So some of the parameters for a principal shopping district is that you have to have a defined district. You also must have a board of directors. Your DDA board of directors can be the board of directors for your principal shopping district if the districts are exactly the same. So if one property is different, then you must have two separate boards. And like other boards and commissions, they're appointed by the mayor with council approval. The formula is a little bit different than what you would expect for a DDA, for example, where one person is a resident in or adjacent nearby to the district. One person is from the local unit of government, and that person has a voting capacity. And then the rest are a majority of businesses in the district. So the activities of a principal shopping district can be financed with grants or gifts, local unit funds, bonds, or special assessments. In my experience, and again, with a quick survey of the peer organizations out there, most of them have some sort of special assessment financing mechanism. Do you have any questions so far? No? Okay. So to create a special assessment, the organization must follow the parameters that are set out in the city charter for a special assessment. Normally, there is a section or article within the charters that provide, and this particular organization has to follow the same parameters that any other special assessment would entail. There is a limit per parcel, so it's capped at $10,000. So it depends on the formula that's used to create the special assessment, but it has to be capped. So if you've got a property owner that's approaching that number when they hit $10,001, it's, you know, it has to be capped. They can't contribute any more than that. Principal shopping districts, unlike other, like, for example, the DDA tax increment financing, has a renewal period of five years. So they have to be renewed every five years unless there are bonds that the PSD board approves and it runs with the bond. I am not familiar with any principal shopping district that has used a special assessment to bond projects. I'm not saying they're not out there. I'm just, in my practical experience, have not encountered one. You must have the marketing and development plan before enacting a special assessment. The assessed level has to relate to the special benefit of the parcel from a total project. And that's a lot of legal language, but basically, it just means, it means that property owners who are closer to where a benefit will occur usually contribute more to that than someone who's far away. In most cases, though, the special assessments are done by a per-square-foot basis, where a property has twenty feet of storefront and three stories, so there's a monetary amount applied to that. Or, which is again, more broadly, in the state of Michigan, it's a percentage of the whole. So those with larger properties, with larger assessments, pay a greater amount than small buildings with single stories. So imagine, big building pays more than little building. There must be an assessment role that has to be generated before the special assessment can be approved. And then lastly, and a key point to distinguish this sort of funding mechanism from others, it does not apply to residential property. So when you're considering a formula to use to create a special assessment, the residential property is excluded. So we were just tossing out some ideas on what a potential district here might look like. I pulled this image from the recently completed downtown master plan. Again, not enough information at this point to say this is what a proposed district may look like or not. But because of the value question, it seems like concentrating a smaller district and not using the DDA district as the basis might make more sense here. But without further examination, it's hard to pinpoint what an exact boundary might look like. So some things to consider as you deliberate whether or not this makes sense for Monroe would be what would be the correct district configuration. And I put on their condensed version of the DDA district with a question mark. Again, wanting to note that as soon as you deviate by one property, it has two separate boards. So it's a separate board of directors that would have to manage, would manage that. What would be, what would it be charged with? So you're going to create a board that has a parallel board in the sense that there's a DDA out there that incurs some of this activity. What's going to be the distinguishing factor? Why create this one over the other? What would be the scope of responsibility? And then lastly, who would make up the board, given that this is another volunteer-created organization? So we're going to need representation from the business community in order to make it successful. And then lastly, I put next steps down here. But really, the way most of these organizations are started is there's usually typically a study group that's formed to answer all the discussion points that I just raised. So I can answer any questions, hopefully.
See if there's questions to start.
I was just going to say, yeah, we did, Annette and I worked together in Farmington, and we did have a PSD there. And from an assessment standpoint, we, you know, used it based on real property value. Again, we didn't have at that point, until recently, we're getting more, there was more residential coming in. But it is a means of supplementing, you know, the tax increment revenue, which in the case here in Monroe is really, I think, you know, holding back some potential redevelopment opportunities, you know, that we may consider. And the other thing I like about it is it actually focuses on marketing and maintenance of the facility. And so one of the things that, and, you know, use an example that, you know, we talked with the business owners as well, we pay taxes. Well, much like what happens if you were in a, I'll use the example of a shopping center, you're going to have, be paying for a lot of common costs for the parking lot maintenance and other, the sign that goes with it. In this case here with the downtown, you typically don't have that, where you incur those costs. This is, if you will, a supplement to what typically you would find with other commercial entities. So given the financial challenges with the DDA and the needs there, that this is a pretty good alternative to consider.
I have a couple questions about Andrew.
Yeah, let's, so would this be proposed to replace the existing DDA or supplement it?
Supplement.
And I do fall back on, this does seem just like another excuse to extract another source of revenue from our businesses.
The businesses aren't contributing any revenue to the DDA. They're just paying their taxes like they need to.
Tax increment financing, yeah. Are the powers, are the powers different in terms of the ability to expend funds on different things? Is that, are those more broad? Is that part of the benefit?
You know, in some ways, I will tell you, and this is going to be an assessment of mine of downtown development authorities is that they have veered from their statutory purpose where "development" in quotes was part of it. And in many ways, they got engaged with some of the other aspects of it from a maintenance aspect of it, you know, sometimes a super garden club or something to that effect. And they've really lost, in some ways, touch with it. The one thing I do like about the PSD, it's focused primarily with marketing and maintenance-related issues. And we truly, with our downtown, have to get focused on the redevelopment of it. And to the extent that we defray them, and I shouldn't say defray, but put money elsewhere, it really lessens our ability to do the redevelopment end of it, which is what the statutory purpose was.
Okay. And have we had any feedback from businesses so far? And I understand that this isn't a business district, so it wouldn't need approval from the participating parties, right? Is that correct?
You have, go ahead.
I'm sorry. In the process to create a special assessment, there are a couple opportunities for businesses to provide public comment. It's a council decision. I would expect that in putting together your study group, you would involve the business community and survey them to find out what they, what would bring value to them that isn't here now.
And that I expect would be part of the commission, the study commission.
That would be part of a study group's task, yeah.
Your Honor, the comments I have are very similar to Vince's, that outside of a downtown, if you're a retail property owner in one of the shopping centers or a mall, you're going to pay a common area maintenance fee in addition to your taxes. And the CAM goes to do things like snow removal, marketing, maintenance of the parking lot. The difference between downtown and a shopping center is downtowns are a combination of individual property owners that basically decide if they're going to clear the snow off their sidewalk or put salt down if it's icy, or sweep their sidewalk, or do a number of different things. They do it on an individual basis. Whereas in a shopping center or mall, that's dictated by your lease, and it's handled by the management company in terms of a CAM fee, common area maintenance fee. During this last couple of weeks with the heavy snows that we've had in Monroe, it's almost impossible, if you park on the street, to get across into the sidewalk because the snow is shoveled to the curb, forming like three, four-foot barriers. People have to get out of their cars and walk a half a block before they come to a store that actually shoveled some of the snow off of their, off of the curb line to get into the sidewalk to actually patronize a business. And this is what the PSD would do, is ensure that all of the sidewalks are cleaned at the same time, and everybody has access, and we're doing it as, they're doing it as a group, not as individuals. There's some misconceptions on PSDs. PSDs aren't all that expensive. Really depends on the budget and how you're assessing the fees. I mean, you know, you, what was the, do you remember what the per-square-foot cost was in Farmington?
When we had it in Farmington, we did ours based on the percentage of a property value against the percentage, or the whole of the assessed values in the district. So property that had a higher taxable value, assessed value, or assessed value had a higher percentage than a building that had a very low. So in some cases, the difference was, I'm trying to think if I can pose, I mean, there was one, some properties that paid less than half percent of that percentage of a whole. And then there were some property owners that paid fifteen, twenty percent of that percentage of a whole. It depended upon their inventory and what their values were. So you're right in the extent that part of the plan of putting one of these together, or part of the study, is deciding what needs to be included, what services are going to be supportable, and then assigning a value to that in order to figure out what that dollar amount should be. We don't have anything in mind, I would say, at this point in time because there hasn't been any discussion other than introducing an idea.
I mean, like, just as an example, if you had a, you know, if you did it on a front-foot basis, a lot of the small, a lot of the historic stores in downtown are probably twenty-four to thirty feet wide. I got to imagine it's only a couple hundred dollars a year, if you're doing it on a front-foot basis. Just odd question. Michelle, what do you pay for condo fees over at Towns? A month. One fifty a month. I've seen PSD fees that probably are one fifty to two hundred dollars a year. So, I mean, we're not talking a significant amount of money unless you're a large property owner that has a lot of properties in the downtown. But I think, I think we need to take a look at it. If we really want the downtown to be marketable and viable, we need to really take a look at the maintenance of it. And I agree with the city manager. The Downtown Development Authority should be spending its money on the redevelopment of properties, not supplementing the marketing, the promotions, and the maintenance of everything. You know, the DDA's on the hook for like a $2 million bond because they redid the Laurel-Fenzel lot. That could have been done through a PSD to some degree, or at least a contribution towards the parking could have been done towards it. Whereas the DDA then would have had more money for, to assist developers on doing redevelopment projects. So that's, those are my comments.
Okay. So is there examples where there's been a PSD in both the DDA? Do you have examples where the community had both?
I can use Farmington as an example, where I used to work, we had both. In that particular case, the boundaries were contiguous, which means that the DDA and the PSD were the same board. But we had separate budget line items. So there was revenue and expenses for typical DDA's items, actions. And then we had separate budgets for what the PSD was. And there was a plan that we created when the PSD was renewed each time, where we conducted a survey of the businesses, saying, "Here are the things that could be funded. Rank these based on importance." You don't have that to begin with, so I think there'd be more. I mean, there's nothing, there's no baseline here to start from. So I think doing that extra homework to initiate something would have to be done in order to really generate and understand what business, what business property owners would want to see.
I understand. So if they were the same, through the budget process, the finance and the revenues collected, whether through TIF or the otherwise, would be then budgeted accordingly to the activities that you'd want within that district. But obviously, the district of the DDA and the city is quite lengthy as you go down Monroe Street, and it's not really, come what I see, what was presented, but also probably not advisable from that size of a current DDA. That makes sense to me.
Right. Well, that goes back to the idea of the value or benefit to the property owner. So if you, if you did something where the PSD district and the DDA district were the same, but didn't provide the services through that entire district, the owners who don't receive that service could say, "You're collecting, but I have no benefit from it." Which is why we wouldn't recommend doing it the same.
I understand. And I know that's just a draft of the... I know that's just a draft of the, the mapping that was shown.
Just an example.
Example, okay. Because I, I thought it, would, did I hear earlier say that it's not included, residential's not included in there? Or is it?
Not included in a special assessment. So, if that is a funding mechanism that is used by the principal shopping district, then through the formula that is created to create that assessment role, the residential property is excluded.
Okay. Because it appeared there was residential, that explains my question. Okay.
Annette, I haven't, it's been a while, it's a couple of years since I read the PSD Act. I can't recall, is city and county, is local government property assessable?
They're tax exempt.
Pardon me?
They're tax exempt.
But can they participate?
In my experience, limited experience with one, that the city, public land did not contribute toward it.
Okay. But is there any provision that says that they could not?
For that, I'd have to.
Take a look at that.
I'm not aware.
With the amount of governmental property that we have in the, in the downtown area, to me, if they could participate, it would make things a lot easier.
Right. Or the alternative would be to exclude that, but then also exclude that from services. So, where you have, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? Vince? Or Andrew, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, I can certainly see positive externalities to the city, discouraging sitting on vacant properties, getting those damn lawyers off the first floor of the downtown, sorry, Matt, and generally, marketing the downtown. I see those as good things, generally. But forcing a benefit, a so-called benefit, onto a, onto a group of businesses that may, they may be shouting for it, and I'm just, and this is new to me, but if they don't want it, I, I would find it hard to stand in support of it, because I think that both the brunt of the cost and the benefit is laid down on them. So, I would certainly be, you know, welcoming towards a study committee to, to survey the local businesses and find that out, but I think that it's, at least from where I'm sitting, it's, it's really gonna depend on your ability to sell it to, to our local businesses and, and the businesses within the PSD. So, that's all I have.
Thanks.
I'll take the advance, I'll take the counterpoint to that. I think we need, we need to take a look at it, because the downtown is part of the greater community, and we can't afford to have, we can't afford to be hostage necessarily to 10 or 15 people that don't want to do something to improve our downtown, which affects the overall quality of life of this community. So, I think we gotta, we gotta take a serious look at this.
Well, I have the easy job, because I'm just giving you information. So, the difficult job is your job, really, to be honest. I mean, we'll, if, if the council were to say, let's form this study group and come back to us with a recommendation, you're the ones approving it, we are not, we're just the implementer. So, it is a very challenging conversation to you.
Well, I guess.
It comes down to John's ability to sell it to the downtown businesses, I think.
Comics, I think that sometimes we forget what has been done, and because maybe they don't like, what part was done or how it's done, I think it's evaluation of what the DDA is currently doing, not what they did in the past. I think that's part of the discussion as well. And to make sure we understand what that's going on, and then ask the questions with the business owners. Because unfortunately, some of the business owners are paying attention to what the plans are. That's where we have another downtown business organization that does certain activities. And we really, we need to do it collectively versus individually, and adding a third process. Now, as you had a third organization that's gonna take care of the downtown, so to speak, or whatever term you want to use. And I think until we are, have the DDA, the DMBN, and if this group does materialize on the same page, then we're just making more committees, or more, more ways in which doing it, but not collectively. And then that, if it's not collective, then I would, I'd be challenged to support it. So, that's, that's what I see as the bigger challenge.
If I may just follow up with, you know, something you were saying there, though, is there is a benefit, you know, we talk about the marketing aspect of it and promotions, but, you know, Annette and I were talking earlier, and, you know, events are part of a downtown activity. Don't lose sight of the fact that in some cases, you can contract with certain entities to, to put on these programs and events, and they take a sense of ownership in where this, with this goes forward. And, you know, this last year, I know that with the DDA, there was some bellyaching about the flower pots on the street. This is something that they themselves and through a PSD could conceivably to take the, the level of maintenance that they want, and could have a lot greater control with it. And I would argue that once you experience having your sidewalks clear after a heavy snowfall, and you have the uniformity of it, if there's any complaint that as a manager, I've heard years, over the years, it's that. You know, you've got a handful of property owners that do a wonderful job of clearing their sidewalks, and then you hit the one where you basically have a little track, and that's all they've done. And it's, some of it's an enforcement end of it, but clearly, you don't get the uniformity of maintenance that you would say, for example, on a private development. So, I think there are a lot of positives once they're in place, but it's still a sales job to, to get there. And so, I guess if they're, you know, where I'm going with this, it sounds like there's some interest in, in potentially forming a, you know, a, a work group to, to evaluate this further, you know, Annette and I can put together some sort of proposal for council to consider, you know, a framework for, for, for taking a look at this, and what kind of outreach that would need be to give it further consideration with the affected business owners, so.
The only other, last comment I have is one that's more, 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 it's, it's more of a contextual type of discussion argument, is that we have to understand that the area between each of the buildings, between building face to building face, is owned by the public. That's the public realm, okay? The individual property owners downtown in the central business district do not own the sidewalks, they do not own the parking lot lights, they do not own the lights on the street, they don't own the landscaping. That is the public's realm. And it's our responsibility to make sure that looks well-kept, maintained, clear of snow, and other type of debris, okay? So, even though they're occupants of the downtown, that is still, in my opinion, part of the public realm, and our responsibility as stewards of the community to make sure that it's appropriately taken care of. Now, I've been at this too long in this town to know that there's gonna be 15 property owners in the downtown, they're gonna come to council saying, don't you dare put a PSD or charge me for anything more than I went paying for. And that's the reason why the downtown looks the way that it does. It looks tired, it hasn't been updated, things haven't been painted, the sidewalks aren't cleaned of snow, because we do not have a strategic way of, of handling and managing what our public areas look like. So, I think it's a bigger, bigger conversation than just what the DDA or the DMBN has to say about it. It's a community conversation. And every time we have a master plan, every time we have a vision, every time we have a public open house, and we have 20, 30, 40, 70 people show up, what do they say? We want a great downtown. Well, let's give it to them. Okay? Let's make, let's give them their wish. Let's give them a great downtown once in a while. So, these are the things that you can do to make a great downtown.
I look forward to the next step. Thank you. Vince, next item.
Next item is kind of a discussion that we didn't get to complete a couple of weeks ago. I know there was some sentiment about the mowing at the Woodlawn Cemetery, and so I put a handout in there, and this city engineer, Patrick Lewis, you know, provided me an excerpt from the bid document in there. But if you look at the last paragraph, it does have some language in there about the type of equipment to be used around the headstones and monuments in the cemetery. And so, I throw that out there. If you're okay with this, it may be focused, but it also may cost a little more to have a higher quality of maintenance. I think we paid, what, 24,000 last year for, for this service? Patrick's got the note handy-dandy.
Twenty-five hundred dollars a month over eight months.
Okay. So, do the math, about $20,000, so. But the question is from the council's end of it, is there a willingness, I think, if we hold the feet to the fire here, it may end up being a little bit higher in the future, but I think you may get a higher-quality service.
Aren't we, or haven't they been damaging the headstones?
Periodically, yep.
And has the policy been reviewed by Mr. Green, who's our historic preservation person on staff, and has it been reviewed? Because we're talking about historic cemeteries, has it been reviewed by the historic district commission?
Not by the historic district commission. I did have a chance to talk to Vince and Patrick about the mowing and the concrete.
And this is the former or current, the new?
This is the current one.
Okay.
Or the former one.
We beefed it up slightly.
Yeah, okay. It was, as Mr. Lewis indicated, it's been beefed up a little bit from what the current one is, in recognition, I think, of some of the concerns with the maintenance or the service, and maybe some recklessness at times.
You know, I know that periodically, there's always that visit, I'll just start with Woodlawn versus Memorial Place there, but, you know, driving through there, walking through there, whether those that place flags out, or, or other items, or just look at it, it's clear, you can see at times when there's stones that have been moved. And I doubt that people are doing it. It's not about damaging and topping things over, I don't think that's been the case. We have some that are deteriorating, and on their own are starting to split and fall, that's, and they're, they're, they sit there at the base. With that said, I, I think that, you know, we have some other technology we probably need to put in place here as well. We talked about how we have to market through a video. I think we either, we have to do an assessment or analysis, was there in the condition? I've walked through there and seen that, see the markers have been moved, and the only way they're getting moved or chipped is because of the, of the equipment that's being used. You know, at times that I think it's done well, and there's not problems, other times there is problems. So, it's really starting at the beginning to, you know, what is the condition, so we can evaluate what the condition is when there is issues. Then you can have something in place that you're gonna enforce what's on a, on a, on a policy or paper as far as what the expectations are. Unless we're gonna have staff out there and watching them do it, which I know is not gonna happen, so, and nor should we, but we have to maintain, I look at it as a historic asset. It's well-known, not only in the community, but outside the community, and there's others that come and visit, and needs to be taken care of, and I think it needs to be done correctly. So, I think we have to have something that is gonna be firm enough, but also something that can be managed and evaluated when it, when it appears there's been a problem.
Other comments?
Your Honor, I was just gonna ask either Patrick or Jeff, are there, I'm, I'm thinking as an example, Memorial Place. There is a portion of Memorial Place which probably could be done with a riding mower, and then there are the, the one area that should be done with a push mower. Do we, in our bidding, or do we actually segregate a drawing to show them what is allowed by riding versus a power mower?
Yes, I'll come with length of that, okay?
Sure.
If you can get that on the record. We haven't yet, but we certainly can. Part of it was waiting until we got through this process. We wanted to make sure council, oh, by the way, Honorable Mayor, Council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. We wanted to get through the, through the review process at this level, and make sure we were all comfortable with where we wanted to go on this, but we certainly can put together that drawing and delineate those areas. I think we languaged it pretty well on this, on this sentence here, that basically, they'll shall not at any time run power equipment, including push mowers, over gravestones installed flush or predominantly flush. That would be dealing with the Memorial Place. So, putting a drawing together to supplement that's no issue. I guess the answer to that is yes, we can handle that.
Same thing at Woodlawn?
Woodland Cemetery, most of them are, we don't have a ton of flush, so that may be a little more difficult delineating exactly which area is there. I'm not even 100% sure how many we have that are flush. We've got a lot of lower ones, and small ones, and tall ones. I don't know, Jeff may have a better idea of how many we have that are flush versus...
Memorial Place?
No, we're talking about Woodland.
Memorial Place has 72, because I've cleaned them and counted them, that we found. Those are not flush monuments, by the way. Those are headstones, they're tablet stones, probably originally when they were constructed or made, were probably six or seven feet. Three or four feet went into the ground, the remainder of it was out of the ground. Over time, those break because of water and freeze thaw, and that's why they're now laying flat in Memorial Place. And the concern is, as they lay there like this, all of that writing, all of that inscription that's on those headstones will also suffer from freeze thaw. As water gets into those areas that have been carved out, that, that will freeze, and eventually, that will break that off. We will lose that information. The Monroe County Historical Museum has, we worked with them a couple of years ago, and they came in and did some archiving of the information there that is on a lot of the headstones. But again, that's a problem, and getting them so that they're doing something with them, maybe not exactly standing them up straight and trying to repair them, because they're extremely fragile oftentimes, when they're those tablet stones that are two or three inches thick. But doing something with them in some way is what we're kind of looking at now. And I know Councilman Eiko Angelie asked about the grant funding through the millage that was from the historical commission and the museum, and I, and originally, my response was that they do not offer those to municipalities, but I said that I would contact Mr. Clark. I think Councilman Eiko Angelie also spoke to Brian Egan, who's chairman of the Monroe County Historical Commission. I talked with Andy Clark, who's the museum director, and they said this year, they are accepting those grant applications from municipalities. But again, at Woodland Cemetery, most of those are monument styles. We don't have a lot of the tablets in there. There are a few, but most of those are upright still at this point in time. So, we're looking at monuments that have a fairly sizable base, but again, I think the, the understanding and, from having seen this, is that they do have, they do sustain damage from these mowers, and the companies try to get the largest mower they can get in between areas, because it's faster and quicker for them. Probably the, the time that we've had, the best mowing has been when it was owned or operated by the volunteer organization, and they hired someone to basically be in the cemetery over the cor, almost every day, mowing and trimming. And they did it with a push mower and string mower, you know, string weed whacker. And so, they did a, a very good job. But again, I think removing some of these heavy mowers out of these areas where they're historic stones, keeping the heavy mowers and those zero-turn mowers off of these stones that are now flush in the ground would be a key to, to maintaining them and preserving them.
The question I have, and I guess maybe it's for, it's more of a contractual question, is, is it cost-effective for the city to hire a couple of folks during the summer to basically just mow the lawn at Woodland under our direction rather than contract it out?
I'll, I'll answer that sort of, I don't wanna say, give you a complete answer, because we haven't done the financials on it. What we have is a little more of a practical challenge in that the, the peak availability in, you know, Michigan, this is where we have retirees available to us, that would be ideally what you'd have, is like a six-month retired person. What we tend to get is a lot of school, school kids, so you can't get high school kids until the first part of June. Even college kids, you're challenged to get them before about the second week of May. And part of our problem is, some of the peak growing season that we're dealing with is the front end of that. So, on most of our seasonals, the easiest ones to come by, dependable ones, because you still have, you still want to get some that you can train and retain year in, year out, because if you, even if you have them under your supervision, sometimes it's more difficult to supervise your own people than it is to oversee the work of a contractor too. So, has it been explored completely? No, but we are challenged enough to find the seasonals that we do get for like forestry and, and parks. So, I, I don't know that it would be any more or less expensive necessarily, because essentially what you're getting is a seasonal-type employee that would work for the contractor anyway. It's just, it's making sure we have the proper balance of oversight, contractual language that allows us to really sit on them. And I'm not sure that we had large zero-turn mowers constantly going in large sections of Woodland. Were they trying to get as efficiently as they could? And certainly, I mean, I bet there's a profit motive there, so we've gotta find that balance that we can live with, but we'll certainly, we can beef this up, we can do a little better, better job policing it, I think, and, and that's, that's where I think we're proposing to go for right now.
Thanks, Patrick.
Sure.
Thank you. We have about 15 minutes.
Well, the other item I wanted to chat about is, we have a, tonight, the Public Act 425 agreement where we're requesting city council to schedule a public hearing in, on March 18th. I don't know, I'm looking at the city attorney, you think we have enough time to go through it in 10 minutes or so?
I think so.
Okay. So, I'm gonna let the...
Sure. Please do. Mr. Buds?
We had some discussion with, in the past about this, but it's essentially a jurisdictional transfer. If you recall, there's a little over 25 acres at the Lazy Boy site, of which, a little over eight and a half acres is in Frenchtown Township. These conditional transfer agreements would put it under a single jurisdiction, that being the city, for redevelopment of that site at some point in the future. So, with that, I'll let Mr. Buds kind of go through some of the details with city council.
Your Honor and Council, you have in front of you a draft contract under the 425 Act for that described transfer. First thing I need to say is that this requires a public hearing, and that's part of the agenda for this evening's regular session, is to schedule that public hearing. It will also require approval by the township board and a public hearing in the township as well. Essentially, as the city manager indicated, the process, thought process here is for there to be the possibility of one jurisdiction for the entire commercial development, to allow for cooperation and collaboration, and to allow for one more streamlined process rather than a property owner or developer having to come to two jurisdictions and work through the process of site plan approval and a variety of other potential rezonings with both jurisdictions. Essentially, services would be provided in a single delivery model. There is reference to the city's economic development and potentially, if necessary, brownfield redevelopment resources. This would be a full jurisdictional transfer during the term of the agreement. You'll notice in Section 3, that the, Section 2 and Section 3 of the agreement, that essentially this would require the city to initiate an application for rezoning of the property to a PUD status within, and it states later in the agreement, two years. I don't necessarily anticipate that that would be any issue, but a timeline that the council should be aware of in that process. Additionally, there's a number of provisions, particularly in the Section 4, that talk about the considerations. A large portion of that is based off the statutory language that's required to be in the agreement. That's on Pages 3 and 4. Again, as I said, this is Section 6 on Page 5. Full authority and jurisdiction would transfer to the city relative to this property during the term of this agreement. Also, there's a formula for tax sharing, which I don't want to go necessarily into the complexity or the detail. It's not an overly complicated formula, but essentially, the thought process is that it would be the township receiving their current levy, millage rate on the value of the property as it would be as of the effective date of this agreement. And then thereafter, once construction or renovation would occur on the property triggered by building permits issued by the city, there would then be a sharing with the township based on the overall taxable value of the property multiplied by the millage rate levied by the township, less the possibility of any tax increment financing if there was any brownfield redevelopment that would occur on the property. And part of the discussion has been that that, if there was any need for brownfield redevelopment and tax increment revenue was generated, the city would not request the BRA to capture for the local administrative fund. It would merely be for the eligible expenses. And the remainder of the taxes would then be, would belong to the city. The term of the agreement that's presently being contemplated in this draft is for 50 years, with the township to have the ability to renew for an additional 50 years at their option. Jurisdiction of the property in its entirety would transfer to the city upon the termination of that agreement. And again, there's a default or a termination provision that applies in the event the city was unable to complete the rezoning to PUD within the two years. Overall, that is the general core of the agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions. This is something that was going to be considered by the Frenchtown Township Board, according to their council as of their meeting earlier today. As of today, I haven't received any comments. We're asking that the public hearing be scheduled for the second meeting in March would allow for the possibility of any further discussion of any issues as far as the township is concerned.
Thanks, Mr. Buds. I know within our item later, we'll have the, within the council meeting, the setting of those dates and that discussion there. So I'll see if there's any questions or comments right now. John?
The 34%, the 34% is based on, they're currently getting 34% of the revenue?
Yeah, so it's based on the percentage of, if you looked at the total property, what's presently in the city and what's presently in the township, their percentage is 34%.
Okay. And that's the basis for the revenue sharing, 34%? Is there any way that, in the recitals, we can put a whereas saying that, because when I looked at the 34%, I said, "Where'd it come from?"
Sure.
So it makes sense that if it's 34% now, it'll be 34% in the future. So if a recital would say, "The township portion of the Lazy Boy property is currently 34%," you know, as the date of the agreement, it kind of makes that connection.
Absolutely. I have no issue with that. And I think probably in that second whereas, where it describes the 8.54 acres, which we could then describe as being approximately 34%.
34%, yes.
Absolutely.
Good.
Other question?
Andrew?
That's 34% of the land mass, that's correct? Not necessarily 34% of the property value, because my understanding of the site itself was that Frenchtown's portion was largely just a vacant field.
It is. Yeah, I think, and again, this, I think in the context of total site redevelopment, we're treating their, their land area as part of the whole for that site redevelopment. But yes, if you looked at what's existing there, it's pretty much the building is in, located within the city. Very little developed land, other than maybe a parking lot in the township area.
So, I was just gonna say, well, to be redeveloped, it's going to have to be removal, so the entire site will be vacant at the start, before redevelopment.
So clarity, I had asked if the 34% was 34% of the current taxable value of all of the property. It's the 34% is the acreage, the percentage of the acreage?
Right.
Okay. So, okay, that makes sense. Now, why you're going to include it in there?
Sure. Yeah. Acreage, not...
Acreage, not value.
Correct.
And then the second question was, do you see any eventuality in which Frenchtown Township would not enact the 50-year renewal if all they have is to gain, is additional tax revenue?
I think it would be in their best interest to renew it. There is no downside.
That was my understanding of it as well.
I'll let Mr. Buds talk about the statutory language associated with the 50-year and the 50-year renewal afterwards.
So in terms of full disclosure, the statute talks about approval of both jurisdictions for anything beyond the 50 years. There have been a number of these agreements throughout the state where one side has granted the other side the ability to be the one party that triggers that. I will tell you, it's not exactly a crystal-clear issue that that's what the statute originally intended for, but a number of jurisdictions have gone about it that way. You know, in my mind, that provision is there almost entirely for the benefit of the township. There's, now, the potential response would be, if we wouldn't agree to allow them to extend, the answer might be, well, what happens to the property at the end of the 50? There may be more discussion about the outcome of that. Right now, the ultimate outcome is after the end of this agreement, that all of the property ends up being within the jurisdiction of the city.
I think you guys did a nice job putting it together.
Other questions? I'm sure we'll, at the meeting, will there be opportunity, plus the public hearing will be scheduled. And then from there, as things move forward, and of course, we'll look at our fact sheet. It'll show the, not only the cities, but the township's timeline as they move forward as well. And that's part of the communication that Mr. Basti will have to make sure he shares with the council as this moves forward. Vince, anything further?
Nothing else, Your Honor, for the work session from my end.
But I'm going to see if there's any final comments for city manager or administration. See and none. I think we'll have enough time then before the regular meeting. So at this time, I'll close the work session. And we have about 15 minutes. Thank you.